Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council meeting for Monday, July 21, 2008, from the Eileen Dondaro Foley City Council chambers. I appreciate your patience. We had a number of work sessions prior to this, so we're starting about 25 minutes late, so I can call the meeting to order at this time and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Farini.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Blalock.
Here.
Councilor Noveline Clayberg.
Here.
Councilor Dwyer.
Here.
Councilor Smith.
Here.
Councilor Kennedy.
Here.
Councilor Spear.
Here.
Councilor Reynolds.
Councilor Penelakis.
Here.
This time, I would like to ask everyone to rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, and I would like Councilor Penelakis to lead us in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I would like to recognize Councilor Eric Spear to read a proclamation regarding National Night Out.
Thank you, Your Honor. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 5, 2008, known as National Night Out, and whereas the 25th Annual National Night Out provides an opportunity for the city of Portsmouth to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative, community policing-oriented crime prevention efforts, and whereas the Portsmouth Citywide Neighborhood Association plays a vital role in assisting the Portsmouth Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the city of Portsmouth and is supporting the National Night Out locally, and whereas it is essential that all citizens of the city of Portsmouth be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that each citizen's personal participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the city of Portsmouth, and whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore I, Thomas G. Farini, Mayor of the city of Portsmouth, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 5, 2008, as National Night Out in Portsmouth, and call upon all citizens of the city of Portsmouth to join the Citywide Neighborhood Association, the Portsmouth Police, Fire, and Public Works Departments, and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 25th Annual National Night Out on that date.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to say at this time, just for councilors who are newly elected this time around, it's typically the practice of city councilors to call the city manager's office, they have a schedule of which neighborhood groups are doing what activities and where exactly they're going to be, and it's common to call in, and if you'd be so kind and you feel you have the time, to call in and say, "Well, I'll go to two or three of them if you can," and that way we try to cover them all and make sure that somebody from the City Council gets to the various sessions, and so, once that list is assembled, you'll have time in the interim, give the city manager's office a call, that's typically how we do it, and you can go and have a good time and eat some food and talk about politics and neighborhoods and things like that. With that, I look to the next item on the agenda, which would be acceptance of minutes for the June 16, 2008, meeting. So moved. We have motion. Second discussion, hearing not all in favor? Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. We now come to item six on the agenda, which is the public comment session. As you know, you have three minutes to speak, and the city attorney will, at 2 minutes and 30 seconds, show you a sign that indicates you have 30 seconds remaining, and then a thank you when your time is up. This evening, we have six speakers, and I would ask when you come forward to identify yourself and the subject upon which you are going to speak, and with that, I'll ask this evening's first speaker to come forward regarding contracts, Eric Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. I might be premature with this discussion, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I'm not sure if there will be a process as these union contracts are approved and brought forward to the City Council, that there would be any public process or exposure of them for the public to comment on. I know there is one pending right now, I don't think there is a very -- I'm just not aware of any type of descriptive process that would proceed as you finally come to the terms of approving these contracts as they come forward to you. You know, as everyone's aware, these negotiations are very well-guarded through a particular period of time until it finally comes to your attention, and, you know, as we all -- and again, as we are aware, we are aware that these contracts, the collective contracts that are being negotiated now, make up 85 percent or better of the annual city budget. So it is not a light item for -- it is a heavy item of consideration, I think, and a reasonable item for public comment when and if they do, as they're approved. Finally, it's been said in the past, because this discussion has taken place before, I'm not sure how you review the contracts, but at least of a scale of measurement that might be considered, is how these contracts weigh up in the private sector, and especially in these current economic times, and anything that would, you know, come forward in the future for forecasting what the economic condition's going to be. That would conclude my topic on that. With regards to, I think, a topic that you're going to be discussing later, it's the resolution from the Granite State Fair Tax Coalition. I hope that, you know, there is a, you know, a little bit of a conversation on this, I'm not sure that I am, you know, an advocate that you would propose or adopt that resolution from what my understanding is right now.
I'm going to utilize the chair's privilege and break the rules and tell you there'll be a public hearing on that this evening, so there'll be an opportunity to speak again.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize Steve Miller regarding Conservation Commission appointments or City Council appointments, I don't know which, or both.
Conservation Commission.
Okay.
Steve Miller, 38 Thornton Street. Thank you, I just want to thank you for considering the reappointment of the four current members of the Conservation Commission. As you know, the C.C. plays a very important role in city government, and these four members are ready to re -- excuse me, got a little frog there. These four members are ready for reappointment so they may continue their commitment to serve Portsmouth. These members of the reappointment represent the core of the current Conservation Commission's experience and institutional memory, as well as key environmental knowledge, and these members have played and will hopefully continue to play key roles in the Conservation Commission's current ambitious work plan, which includes our work with the planning board on the ordinance rewrite, grant-funded projects on inventory in vernal pools and buffer restoration, several outreach and education projects, the update in inventory to the 1972 open space plan, as well as our standard workload of reviewing and advising the planning board on conditional use and dredge and fill permits, so I just wanted to say thank you for reconsidering, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next, we'd like to recognize Bill Devine.
If you don't mind, I'll sit down.
Can we get a microphone to Bill? Would someone be kind enough to?
You'll hear me. William Devine, 470 Lincoln Avenue, Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I guess I'm going to have to do it.
Just for the folks at home, Bill.
Thank you. My purpose in being here is to speak about the problem I have along with my neighbors at the corner of Lincoln and Union Street, of which the city engineer and the other, Mr. Allen, are well aware of. I've had my basement flooded five times in the last six days. The problem lies in the fact that the drains on Lincoln Avenue don't function, they block up all the time, and I'm inquiring to the city manager or the city engineer to give me some idea of what happened to the plan to extend the new sewage separation of the storm water and the drain water on Lincoln Avenue. If that's -- if somebody could give me an answer there, I'd appreciate it very much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker this evening is Aria Katz.
I just put my name down, I shouldn't have.
You're here for moral support, that's perfectly fine, okay. Then next, we'll recognize Bill St. Laurent regarding middle school renovation.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors, Bill St. Laurent, 253 Colonial Drive, not speaking for the Tax Payers Association, this is me right now. Okay, my wife and I and people that we've known cut coupons, cut corners, buy generic things so we can save money, money in the bank for our future, for our retirement future. I drive a scooter right now to save gasoline, so it's so high. These are all voluntary things, I realize, and we work hard to do these things, and previously I worked overtime, I even have a part-time job now to help us in our future financial needs for our old age. What's my point? My point is, I must be a jerk. Here I am saving this money, trying to put some money away for our future. I could be, I should buy a Cadillac Escalade. The heck with a darn scooter. I should be buying the best foods, wine, lobster. The school board comes along and spends a fortune on this huge building that they're going to build? You've got to do something about this, and I know the school, I know you're not the school board, but I know that they're going to ask for money. This grandiose building is terrible. I can't believe the nerve of this board to come along and take monies from us people who have struggled hard to keep our money and build this Taj Mahal for the kids. Do the kids deserve it? I don't think so. Do they deserve a good education? Absolutely, but they don't deserve a Taj Mahal. I don't deserve a Taj Mahal. I can't afford it, and neither can the people of Portsmouth. Something's, this has got to stop. We're going 40-some-odd thousand, it'll be 50,000 before we're through. Let's build the building, let's renovate the building within the building, moving over and spending another couple of million here and a couple of million there. That couple of million is the coupons that I cut and the gas that I try to save, so please, work with the school board, cut this out, this huge, grandiose building that they're building. This has got to stop. We don't need a 700-seat auditorium for middle school, and the state even said that. Thank you.
Thank you, and our final speaker this evening is Alan Nelson regarding the middle
Good evening, excuse me. Good evening, I'm Alan Nelson, 225 Marcy Street. I'm urging you tonight to exercise your judgment, leadership, and political courage to help bring a balanced and realistic approach to the Portsmouth Middle School project. You have a responsibility to us as taxpayers and voting citizens to make sure our tax dollars are utilized efficiently for the general good. It is time to take this project out of a vacuum and examine both the intentional and unintentional consequences created by it. The school committee, with the exception of one member, is coming before you tonight requesting that city resources be utilized to explore a middle school option which will only serve to delay building the school and increase costs. This attempt to desecrate the Pierce Trust/Deed restriction, which has been in active use for generations, has the potential to do real harm to abutting property owners, recreational users, library users, and traffic flow and safety. That is the reality, and those who choose to conveniently play semantics with the words "trust" versus "deed restriction" have probably started with a conclusion and worked their way backwards. I suppose we could play the same game with the term "open space" or "green space," but I don't think we need to. We certainly know the intent when the Pierce Trust or the deed restriction was created and how important it is in our city's green space and open space initiative now. I have been party to deed restrictions myself, I had reason for it, and I expected it to be honored, as by the way, so did the abutting landowners. Which brings up a question or two. Who is going to explain how taking away green space in that neighborhood adjacent to the Pierce property in this era of $4 a gallon gasoline and supposedly buying undisclosed green space elsewhere in the city is in their best interest? Has somebody bothered to think of that? Does anyone in this process really care? By the way, why did we honor the Pierce land when we spun the library around, when we built our library project, and now we, for some reason, are considering not honoring it? You know, staying informed in this, in these matters is not always easy. The various Parrot Avenue options that were available to the public for less than two months, and the public was requested, and public input was requested however. However, if making the few meetings were not an option, looking at the proposed concept plans were not easy either. I went online, I couldn't find them, I went to City Hall, they didn't have them, I went to the school superintendent office, and the excellent staff made copies for me. The details were not great, but I found the left option site presentation to be embellished, not realistic, and wanted to make comment. I subsequently discovered that all options, with the exception of the left and right, had vaporized from consideration. Several board members and some city councilors I spoke to cannot give an answer as to why the front version was eliminated, only that the architect ruled it out. This was a better option that did not affect the Pierce situation and even approved a traffic and safety issue. It is understanding, it is my understanding that the architect works for us, and I would have expected such a crucial option to be open to more review, and certainly would have expected decision-makers involved in this to be better informed. It strikes me that broader public input was not a high priority or perhaps even possible. We do not live in a vacuum in the city, we pride ourselves as the city of the open door, a city of ethics all the time, not just when it would seem to be convenient. You cannot justify the self-serving gerrymandering of green space and violation of trust and stay true to the principles of the city. Utilizing city assets and pursuing this option is not prudent. There are alternatives available, our school committee can do much better, it's up to you as holders of the purse strings to look out for our best interests and make certain they do. I apologize for going a little long.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment session, and now we move on to a public hearing regarding the Granite State Fair Tax Coalition resolution. This is the public hearing portion of the meeting, and just to remind everyone as to the rules, there are three rounds of being able to speak, you can speak for, against, or simply to. I will briefly read it because it is short, and then we will convene the public hearing. Resolved, we the citizens of this town believe in a New Hampshire that is just and fair. The property taxes become unjust and unfair. State leaders who take a pledge for no new taxes perpetuate higher and higher property taxes. We call on our state representatives, our state senator, and our governor to reject the pledge, have an open discussion covering all options, and adopt a revenue system that lowers property taxes. That is the resolution, and we welcome the public comments, so I'll convene the hearing at this time, and ask anyone who wishes to come forward to identify themselves and
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Bill St. Laurent, 253 Colonial Drive, and present the Tax Payers Association. This resolution smacks against our constitutional rights to express our views on a given subject. First of all, I don't think it's legal for local officials to be making resolutions for local citizens when it comes to taking their rights away from other citizens. If you vote yes tonight for this resolution, you are telling the rest of the state that the residents of Portsmouth oppose the pledge, which may or may not be the feelings of the residents of Portsmouth. This resolution seems simple enough in that it takes away the need to have this no broad-based tax pledge, but it also puts a stigma on those who would take the pledge. Without getting into good or bad of a broad-based tax, the good of bad of a broad-based tax, which I believe should not be part of the discussion of this resolution, I think the issue is telling someone what they can and cannot do. If we are going to decide whether we should or should not have a broad-based tax, let the voters decide this issue at the polls, not some town or city elected official that want to put a gag order on state residents running for office. There's nothing now that restricts candidates for state office for supporting or opposing a broad-based tax. So why now send a resolution restricting this freedom? You may say there is nothing in the resolution restricting them from taking the pledge, and that may be so, but the mere fact that this resolution, that these resolutions are out there puts a pall over this pledge. Seems to me that the ones wanting to do away with this pledge feel heat in the kitchen at election time and will love to do everything in their power to do away with it. I say if you can't stand the heat in the kitchen, get out and move to Maine, Massachusetts, Vermont, where you would not have this problem, and you would have all the money you want to spend like there was no tomorrow. I question even the, to the city attorney, Mr. Solomon, that this resolution speaks to, speaks for the residents who really have not expressed themselves. This particular issue, if taken, if put in for a vote during election time, okay, I can understand that and where it comes from, but to have this body decide for the city of Portsmouth to remove this pledge or have the pledge not be used, I think is unconstitutional. You're telling somebody to do something that they, that they should be able to do, and there's no restrictions on any of it now. So I think the pledge should stay, if they want it, if they don't want it, that's their business, but to bring out a resolution, to do away with it, is not, I think is unconstitutional. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional speakers in the public hearing.
My name is Eric Anderson. Just for the sake of another comment, I would have to agree with the previous speaker's logic and discussion on this, it's just as, I don't know if it's, if it's really with, I'm not denying that it could be within the realm of the council, but it is, it's somewhat of a major, it's a major issue that the council is going to make a statement on or do something about, and I, and I hope that they would not do this, they would just let this, they would let this pledge stay or go or be at the object, at the option of the individual who would like to take it or not like to take it, and that's, that's more of a, that's more of a free speech issue that should be entitled to the individual who does want, does or doesn't, does or doesn't want to take the pledge. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers in the public hearing. Seeing none rise, I close the first round and call the second. Anyone wish to speak again? I now close the second round, we're on to round three. Thank goodness it is in a prize fight, it would be 15. Anyone care to speak? Seeing no one rise, I'll now close the public hearing. Next, we move to item, and I would also comment that this, this will be taken up on item 12C under Councilor Penelakis's name, item 12C on the agenda later on in the meeting. Now moving on to item eight, approval of grants and donations. We first have the acceptance of a 2008 Business United for Water Security Grant. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, make the motion to accept, the City Council accept and the $4,500 and authorize the city manager to execute the grant agreement.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Questions? City manager, briefly.
It's pretty straightforward, we're putting a security fence, and this money's for labor costs, it doesn't cover the whole cost, but we were successful in getting $4,500 of $45,000 caught.
Thank you. Seeing no further requests to speak, call the question, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Next, we have three donations to the Coalition Legal Fund, the town of Sugar Hill in the amount of $500, the town of Carroll in the amount of $1,000, and the town of Tuftonboro in the amount of $5,000. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Next, we have the acceptance of the NHCF funding for Art Speak and release of U-DAG matching funds before us this evening. This is in the amount of $20,000 in a release of $10,000.
Move to approve and accept.
We have a motion, we have a second.
The other section.
City manager?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you very much. The other request would be to, as you recall at your previous meeting, you did a challenge grant, so that with this $20,000, they're also asking for the release of the additional $10,000 in U-DAG, and I would ask that if that be added to the motion, that'd be appreciated.
Is that acceptable to the maker?
Acceptable.
To the second?
Yes.
All, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Next, we have item D, acceptance of police department grants and donations. New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency for DWI Hunter Patrols and Sobriety Checkpoints grant in the amount of $10,513.80. The New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency for Portsmouth DWI Patrols grant in the amount of $4,870.10. The PAL, PAL Basketball Program for the Portsmouth Police Ranking Officers Association, $100. Next, the PAL Basketball Program from Boynton Waldron, Doleak Woodman &amp; Scott, PA, donation in the amount of $400. Item five, the Police Explorer Cadet Donations, the Fuller Foundation, $2,000. Charitable Division of the Rotary Club of Portsmouth, $1,300. Piscataqua Savings Bank, $250. Portsmouth Auxiliary Police Association, $250, and Nancy Noveline Clayberg for $50. Finally, under that, we have number six, Sergeant Corey McDonald's participation in Harvard University's Driving Government Performance donations, JP Netto in the amount of $2,900, AXL Inc. in the amount of $1,000, JP Netto Jr. in the amount of $750, GA Caldecott in the amount of $250, and Mutual Inc. Inc. in the amount of $100. The motion would be to approve and accept these grants and donations to the Portsmouth Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously. We now move along to consideration, whoa, yes, no, we do, I'm sorry. We move along to item nine on the agenda, consideration of resolutions and ordinances. Item A, first, is the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 7, Section 7.702, truck traffic prohibited on Maplewood Avenue from Central Avenue to Woodbury Avenue. We'd need a motion to pass first reading, and that would set it down for a public hearing and second reading at the August 4, 2008.
Move we pass first reading and hold a second reading at the August 4 City Council meeting?
Second.
Discussion.
May I? Counselor Smith.
This came out of traffic and safety, this is to get tractor-trailer trucks off of Maplewood Avenue, but realizing that you have the turning that is coming on, on and off the bypass, we've started from Central for a point that'd be like the CLR, Electrical Supply Place, where people have been here long enough, remember, is at Sweatterville. From there, all the way up to Woodbury Avenue to get tractor-trailer trucks off that, taking them, if they're coming from the downtown, to go out onto the bypass, up 16, and get the tractor-trailer trucks out of the neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Institutional knowledge wears a sweater. If we have no further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Next, item B, third and final reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 1 by the creation of an Article 18 entitled Payment by Credit Card Pursuit to RSA 80:52-C. Motion would be to pass the third and final reading on this proposed ordinance authorizing credit card payments in accordance with state law.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion duly seconded, discussion, hearing not all in favor? Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. We now move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, I'm going to read the consent agenda, and the typical motion, in fact, it appears to be that all of these, we would likely be moving these to the city manager with power, except as regards the donations to Art Speak, so I'll begin with the consent agenda unless someone would like one pulled out, and I do recall Councilor Penelakis indicated to me that the letter from, is it Spiro Mafluzy regarding, on item D? Would like to be read. Would you be kind enough to keep track of that one, Councilor Penelakis, and read that for us?
Sure.
And I'll begin reading the consent agenda, and we'll then read Mr. Mafluzy's letter after that. Acceptance of donations to Art Speak for overnight art event, McHenry Architecture, $500, the McLean Law Firm, $100. Acceptance of donations to Art Speak, Flatbread Pizza in the amount of $500, anonymous cash donations in the amount of $124. Letter from Eric Weinreeb, Portsmouth Rotary Club, requesting permission to hold the annual Thunder Chicken 5K Road Race on Thursday, August 7, 2008. Yes, Counselor.
Can I just pull that out for just a second? I'm in favor, that's fine. I just want...
I just, when we do road races, we really need to concentrate on maybe an outlet out of the South End somehow. I was stuck last Saturday for, for about 25 minutes to get in and I was trying to meet some kids. Um, and there was, I couldn't even go out of Washington Street. So maybe if we can find a way, it was using all the streets and there's just, and a couple other neighbors had some problems. I would encourage us to find maybe a release route for that end somehow, somewhere. I tried every angle. I went every direction and kept getting stuck. So for road races, we just really need to come up with a plan with a number of them. I mean, it's every Saturday.
Okay, that will be, in the event we approve that, it'll be moved to the city manager with power. I see him taking down notes as Counselor Kennedy speaks. We'll move on to, do you have the letter from?
Yes.
Mr. Mafluzy, would you care to read it at this time?
Honorable Mayor Barini and city council members, subject request to establish a city bench fund in memory of William Bill Mafluzy. Dear Mayor Barini and city councillors, my brother Bill died recently at the age of 83. In his retirement, his love for his native city, Portsmouth, would bring him to the, in the morning, to Market Square and Pleasant Street on a regular basis. He would enjoy his time sitting on one of the two benches east of Breaking New Ground's coffee shop on Pleasant Street. There he would meet his friends and well as tourists and tell accounts of the interesting history of Portsmouth. I respectfully request permission to speak with our, our city managers, seek approval of placing a plaque on the second of a city-owned bench and above indicated site to read in memorance of William B. Mafluzy. January 23rd, 1923, October 20th, 2006. His loving family.
Thank you, Counselor Penelakis. Moving on to the next item, letter from Jay Deener, Seacoast Half Marathon, requesting permission to hold the third annual Seacoast Half Marathon on Sunday, November 9, 2008. Item F, request from Lauren Mensinger, L Studio for Sidewalk Obstruction License to place an A-frame, A-frame sign in front of that establishment. Item G, a request from Meredith Stolper, Loaf and Ladle for Sidewalk Obstruction License to place one A-frame, A-frame sign in front of Loaf and Ladle. Item H, request from Barbara Theodore, Oldport Properties for Sidewalk Obstruction License to place one A-frame sign in front of that establishment. Item I, a request from Cliff Arand, Peché Blue Restaurant and Bar for Sidewalk Obstruction License to place one A-frame sign in front of that establishment. And finally, a letter from Corey and Bob McGrath requesting permission to install a bench in memory of James Walden in the downtown area. That is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to accept?
Move to accept consent agenda.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Your honor.
Recognize the Assistant Mayor.
Like to move up one item under section 12, I'm sorry, section 12, under city manager's items which require action, number eight, request for the USS New Hampshire Commissioning Celebration.
Okay, that's a motion to suspend the rules for the consider, consideration of this and-
Seconded.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. So we'll go forward with that agenda item, and this is a request for the USS New Hampshire Commissioning Celebration. We will be moving it to the city manager for a report back on August 4th for further discussion. Do you have a comment?
Yes, we have a couple of letters from Doug Bates, the president of the Chamber of Commerce, and asking for permission for logistics for parade from the middle school to Market Square, nine, to 9:45 a.m. on the commissioning day, which is Saturday, October 25th, 2008. Coordination of logistics, parking signage for people wishing to view the commission from Fort Tree Island. And of course, that would also have to go to the trustees of the trust. Coordination of logistics for placing of a Jumbotron on Fort Tree Island or Prescott Park or close-up viewing of the commissioning ceremony, which takes place at the shipyard. Permission to hang banners on poles in the city. Permission to park vehicles at Portsmouth High School, the Masonic Temple. Formal adoption of the submarine by the city of Portsmouth. Use of city parks or event fundraising with area nonprofits. Media correspondence relations and letters from mayor and official commissioning program. It would be my recommendation that over the next couple of weeks that I meet with representatives from the chamber and the commissioning committee, to kind of ferret through some of this and figure out what we can and cannot do. There are a couple of things we have concern with, but I want to get more explanation on it, and that way we'll get you a full explanation when it comes back.
We need a motion.
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Counselor Smith, then Assistant Mayor.
Thank you, just briefly, is I-
To bring a report, the motion's to bring a report back to the city manager.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Just one quick question, is just to make sure that the Pierce Island Committee and trustees of the trust are having meetings in time between now and when this is supposed to happen, which is in October?
Yeah, I would-
Get the information back to you so that it gets back to us in time.
My question is, do you want me to meet with them before I come back on August 4th? I don't think I'm going to have time to do that.
Maybe if you can just touch base with the chairs of those committees.
I'll give it a try, sure. I'll try, I'll invite them to the meeting, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, Assistant Mayor.
Yeah, just the, the, this celebration is going to be something great for the city, but there was one item that kind of jumped out at me that we might want to ask the city manager to take closer look at, and that's the one asking to hang banners on the poles in the city. And I only mention that because we have gone to great lengths recently to beautify and large our sidewalks, kind of clean up Market Street, Congress Street, and I'd like to know a little bit more about what the banners, how long they would be there, if that would be inappropriate for, for our city streets.
Yeah.
Particularly since it mentioned using business logos or business names, and I don't know if that sets up something, an area that we want to get into.
One thing I did, as we, I did, and I will talk to Doug about it, but I have asked the city attorney to give me an opinion on it. He's working on it, and it appears that there may be some issues with putting those on, but I need to, you know, get with him, and we'll have a report back for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor. Any further discussion? Doug, do you care to add anything?
Well, just, just with regard to the banner, it's just a 60-day thing, so, and I'm really, I understand your sensitivity and I share some of your ongoing concerns, but this, this is not just a city of Portsmouth event, it's a state of New Hampshire event. The fact that we're hosting it is, is actually huge, so, exactly consideration, outstanding opportunity for us.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thanks, Doug. Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
And I think we may have already voted on item number one and the city manager with action. Was that included in the motion to?
It was not.
Okay, I would like to suspend the rules and move up item number one, which is-
This would be item number one, the Assistant Mayor is moving.
The renewal of the memorandum of understanding between Art Speak and the city of Portsmouth?
Thank you. So we have a second. All in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. City manager.
Thank you, your honor. What you have before you is a memorandum from Art Speak Coordinator requesting a renewal of the memorandum of understanding between the city and Art Speak for a period of July 1st, 2008, through June 30th, 2009. As you recall, on April 21st, 2008, Art Speak gave its annual report on arts and culture in the city. The report addressed requirements that Art Speak must satisfy as outlined in the MOU such as promote appreciation awareness, participation in dialogue in the support of the arts and culture in the city of Portsmouth, serve in an advisory capacity for all city government departments, provide an annual state of the city culture report, convene in an annual arts and culture forum, provide business and cultural exchanges, and provide regional and state cultural collaboration opportunities. And if the council recalls, you authorize $10,000 in UDAG funds to offset the Art Speak Coordinator's contractual services. Art Speak has matched this award by a grant from the New Hampshire Channel Foundation as well as with small donations from projects such as overnight art. This is an item that the MOU would allow to extend to work with the coordinator in various capacities, and it's something that we want to memorialize our relationship with Art Speak, and it's done on an annual basis. So if there are any concerns any given year, we can address those in that specific timeframe.
Thank you. We're going to need a motion for discussion purposes.
Your honor, I'd like to recommend the city council authorize the city manager to renew the memorandum of understanding between Art Speak and the city of Portsmouth from July 1, 2008, through June 30th, 2009.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. We have, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, we're ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Now my mission is to find where we were on the agenda.
Item 11A.
Item 11A, thank you to the city clerk. This is consideration of resolutions and ordinances. I'm sorry.
No.
11, I was looking at nine. Okay, it's all right, I know Roman numerals. All right, presentation and consideration of written communications and petitions. A letter, a letter from Dr. Mitchell Shulman School Board requesting that the city council refer the issue of developing a timeline for the acquisition of property to the left of Portsmouth Middle School to attorneys, city attorney Sullivan for a report back. That is a request we can, we can accept and place on file? Or, if, city manager?
This, this letter was as a result of a conversation that both the city attorney and I had with Mr. Shulman and, and the superintendent of the schools. It was felt that before any additional works done on that section of the property that they have, I think it's tentatively decided to go with, that there needs to be some kind of evaluation from the city attorney's office on a timeline for acquiring the property and letting the city council know to what extent that's going to be. And essentially, I asked the city attorney to maybe elaborate more on that, but the idea was that before any more money spent that on, on design, that there really needs to be some evaluation and investigation by the city attorney's office so that the city council has all the information before it moves forward.
Thank you, the city manager. Before we go to the city attorney, just note for the public that, that the nomenclature we are using and that the school board is using at this time is that this is a preferred option. For, thank you. That is a preferred option. That does not mean it is cast in stone, but this is the next step in the process. City attorney.
The, the terms eminent domain, condemnation, and taking are really synonyms, and they all mean the same thing. In whichever name is used, the process, although recommended here by the school board, is actually controlled entirely by the city council. And before we began, therefore, before we started to put any city staff time into the process, we wanted to make certain that the city council wanted that time spent on the process. Therefore, what is in front of you now is really just the very preliminary policy question of whether the city council wishes to begin towards the process of eminent domain or taking of the Pierce restricted land, Alumni Field, or not. And if the council determines that it wishes to begin the work, then the next step is we will bring back to you a detailed timeline of, of what will be involved in terms of hearings and time periods before the eminent domain or taking process could be completed.
Thank you. So I guess the motion would be that we, we accept this letter and instruct the city manager to do as he indicated he would if we instructed him to do so. So can somebody, if someone cares to turn that into a short motion?
Refer the city attorney.
To refer to the city, refer to the city attorney for a report back. That's pretty simple. That would be the motion, and then we can have discussion.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion. Counselor Penelakis?
Yes. Before we spend a lot of time and money on this as a council, I think we ought to consider the fact that taking of the Pierce land is not, will not be just, it's a simple thing because it's in the New Hamp, in the United States Constitution, that the cities or towns can take any land that they prefer for public use. And I'd just like to have this council kind of think about a few things that when we make this decision to take this land or say that we will, there could be like the Little Harbor Road that has 23 acres on it, Lafayette Road, Lang Road, 40 acres, Great Bog, and Sagamore Headlands, all which, if we decided as a council or any council in the future, decided that we might want to build our, take our city hall out to one of these pieces of land, we could take that land as eminent domain. And these people have left this to the city as conservation land or wrecked land or something else. So I myself would vote against even putting, sending this letter to the city council, I mean to the city manager.
Thank you. Counselor Penelakis, Counsel Dwyer.
It's just like I could eat a whole lot of chocolate every day, but I don't. I, I actually would prefer us to move faster on this than I think the motion suggests. Having followed the process very carefully, having gone to all the public hearings, having listened to the school board, we have a preferred side, and my understanding of what a next step was going to be was to actually begin the action of the taking. We're, we're trading a baseball field for a soccer field.
No, we're not.
So I would, you know, I know what the motion is, but it seems to me that instead of simply investigating a timeline, that we actually, I thought the school board asked us to begin the action.
Well, I think either a motion to table the current motion and a new motion being brought, or a motion to amend would be in order if Counsel Dwyer cares to do so. I'd have to ask the city attorney on that regard, but, but my understanding, your report back is not initiation of the action, but a detailing to us of what that action would entail should we so vote on it.
Well, recognizing that this is an important policy decision to be made by the policymaking city council, obviously, we would not have proposed beginning any action until the council made a determination and wanted that action to be begun. Now, it would be entirely permissible for the council to make the decision right now to commence the process, but that's a council decision, not a staff decision. So we're just waiting for instructions.
So we do, the motion at this point would be to refer to city attorney for a report back. Hearing Counsel Dwyer's comments, I'll just see if discussion evolves a little bit at this point. The Assistant Mayor.
I agree with Counselor Penelakis. I'm, I'm opposed to eminent domain in this case. Thank you.
Counselor Smith?
I won't belabor the point. I will not be voting in favor of this either. I do not believe in eminent domain in this case.
Counselor Novaleen Clayberg?
I, as all of us, I've wrestled with this also, and I've, I have, I had an idea that if we could talk to the descendants of the Pierce family and see if they would be willing to work with us, and the idea I had was to name whatever fields we build after, call it the Pierce Family Recreation Area or the Pierce Family Athletic Complex, you know, perhaps they would be willing to talk to us about some kind of a, of action like that where we would take the land, but in exchange for that, and with their permission, we would name something after them that would pertain to athletics or open space or, I, I think that could be a compromise.
Further, okay, Counsel Speer?
Yeah, I would agree with Counselor Dwyer's suggestion, only in the sense, I don't, I don't know, is this timeline going to slow us down? My question is, the work required to come up with a timeline would be the same effect as if we voted on this motion and then came back or saying what she had suggested to start the process now. Is that really speeding things up? Is it still going to take you some time?
It would, it would be some difference. For example, the process, early on in this process, is going to be a hearing in front of the city council to determine the public necessity. If the instruction tonight from the council to the administration was, give us a timeline, we could tell you when that might happen. If the instruction from the city council to the administration tonight was, begin the process, then we would attempt to schedule that first public hearing.
That being said, I do think time is important, and I think we've discussed this quite a lot, so I'm going to withdraw my motion in favor of Counsel Dwyer's-
Counsel Dwyer did not make a motion.
Idea.
Counselor Speer did.
I made the motion to-
Speer made the motion to refer to the city attorney.
He did.
I'd prefer to withdraw that.
He's withdrawing his motion. Because, is, do we need a second for him to withdraw? Cause, is, do we need a second for him to withdraw? Will the second agree to that withdrawal?
Seconded the motion.
Uh, I could, don't quite understand what I'm doing here, can you explain it again?
He will be taking the motion off the table, there will then be no motion pending.
The idea being to present another motion that would, uh, begin the process, rather than just developing a timeline for the process. The idea being we would, if the motion passed, move forward, speed it up.
That's correct. So he is trying to withdraw his motion at this time for the purpose of bringing presumably another motion to actually move the process forward and vote to go forward now.
I guess I prefer not to withdraw my.
Okay, she does not withdraw her second, the motion is, uh, before us, further discussion. Council spear?
I'll discuss on the topic, um, looking at the, uh, I've been to all the various, uh, work, work sessions in the school board, uh, work sessions with the architect, um, look at all the different configurations for the middle school. In any configuration, there's going to be some use of the alumni field. Even the configurations that moved off across Rogers Street would use some of alumni field for transportation purposes, which don't fit, uh, the purposes of the deed restriction. So, at some point, unless we have just, uh, no school activities at all on that side of the building, we're gonna be back here doing the same discussion. Secondly, I think any configuration of the school is gonna require some compromises. I know that we're already asking the school board to have compromises in terms of size, we expect the, I hope those sizes will go down. But, in the other configurations, moving across Rogers Street or going into Alumni Field, I think that, uh, does have compromises. I agree, we're losing some, uh, green space in the center of town, but, uh, looking at all the options, I think it's the, uh, definitely the best fit for the school and the best fit for the city. And I don't, I, I think that's the best move for the city, so I'll leave it at that.
Council kennedy? No. Any, okay, further discussion, let me see, I looked and saw all hands up at once, so I'll come this way. Council smith, council dwyer, assistant mayor.
Thank you. Having sat on the planning board for a lot of years and chaired that committee, I really wish that there was a, a way to get paid for every time I heard someone say, if I don't have it this way as presented to me, I can't do the project. To, to have to say, unless we take Alumni Field, we just can't do this here, to me is, is a farce. Um, I, there has been so many projects that have come before the city, so many architects, as talented that they are, come up and say, it has to be done this way, it's the only way we can fit it on to make it work and make the numbers work. And the board, planning board would always say, no, I don't think so, go back and do it again. And lo and behold, they'd come up with another way of doing it. And, I think that's what needs to be done here. They need to go back and keep working on it because this land was given to the city of Portsmouth with deed restrictions on it, with a trust that was given that that land would be held for recreational purposes only, period. And I think for us to take that away is a slap in the face not only to the family, but would stop anybody else in the future from ever wanted to, wanting to give such a kind gift to the city.
Council dwyer?
That, that sounds like it needs a strong story to follow it. So I'd like to give a strong story which has helped me to think about, uh, recreational uses. Last summer at one point, the speaker of the house and our state senator and I were going to a meeting at the library and it was in the evening, um, and we were, um, we pulled up to park, um, in the area beside the softball field. And we're told by the gentleman players that our windows would likely be broken if we parked there because, uh, parking was needed for the ball players, their friends who were coming in. Um, and that to me says a lot about recreation, but it also says, um, that the purchase of land that the city made a century ago with a deed restriction, the deed restriction for recreational purposes, to change a field used by adults into a field used by children, which does change it from a diamond shape to a rectangular shape. We are talking about a geometric change here and, you know, a lawyer can help us with how much that changes the deed restriction. But we're talking about a field use that would be appropriate for soccer, lacrosse, and the kinds of recreational uses that, um, middle school kids would use during the day, and I suppose adults might use in the night, for rectangular field sports. Um, I have a real hard time understanding why I would privilege adult evening use of a diamond shaped field over child use of a rectangular shaped field. They both seem to me to be for recreational purposes, they both are open, they both have grass, they're green, they fulfill all the things that have been talked about tonight. And with all of the goodwill that has come forth from the citizens, from the school board, from everyone who's tried to make this work, you know, I respect geometry as much as the next person, but the change from a diamond shaped recreational opportunity to a rectangular shaped recreational opportunity just does not seem to me to be enough to turn down all of that work that the school board, the city staff, the citizens of Portsmouth have been doing over the last year. Uh, I have a real hard time understanding how we could ever do that.
Assistant mayor?
Yeah, I, I just thought I should take the opportunity to explain my earlier, um, comment that I was opposed to eminent domain because I am. Um, and it hasn't to do with the design, in fact, when I looked at the designs, I said, gee, that, I actually liked them both left and right, but it's not my decision as to what the school's going to look like, which direction's gonna go in. I have my preferences as a citizen, certainly, but they're just the fact that there is available land, uh, and I, from what I understand from very possibly willing sellers, that doesn't require, um, any of the, uh, legal techniques to either take eminent domain or, or whatever you wanna call it. It just, it's just, uh, it's my instinct. Uh, I was just, asked this question when I decided to run for city council, my feeling was the same then, I just, it's a concept that I'm just opposed to. Um, I hear some good arguments to, to let that ride, but I personally like the open space, I think it would be more encroached on, yeah, it might be a different shaped field, but it certainly would be smaller, cause what I saw in the design, it would be a lot, a lot of that open space would be built upon. And, um, I, since there is another alternative, I don't think eminent domain is necessary. I think that would be one of the things that I would, as a public official, would have to require myself to vote to do something of that nature, that it would be absolutely necessary. And since there is another option, I can't tell myself it's necessary. So, uh, I can't go along with, uh, participating in a vote that would make that possible, it just goes against my gut instinct.
Council penelakis, then council spear?
Yeah, I'd also like to say that we, when we keep hearing that they're gonna renovate the middle school, that is not true. The only thing that's gonna be left of the middle school is the front part of it. And I, I don't think that we should spend $55 million on something like that, but that's beside the point, we're not arguing that tonight. But on this design too, we're also taking two other fields, the central little league field and the Leary field. And having served on the rec board, I have not been able to find any land that we could put fields on and we're begging for. The Leary field is gonna be turfed, which cannot be used as a baseball field unless we spend special money to have it done. And it's gonna be spread out onto, um, the central field to make them have enough field space. So I mean, that's another reason for not wanting to do this.
Council spear?
Yeah, I just wanted to make two quick points. Um, I looked into going back into the city tax records and the, uh, purchase agreement that the city, when the city bought Alumni Field along with the armory and then the, uh, all the land going to the district court, in fact, that with city actually paid more than the assessed value for that land. And so I don't think there's any moral issue here for me in terms of, uh, someone donating land that might come to us in the future. The second thing is, in terms of going across Rogers Street, not only do I think that the design the school board has endorsed, um, is a better design, but I think it's also gonna be a less expensive design and the reason I think that is this, it is true, there are some willing sellers across Rogers Street, however, the money that we spend will go to those private interests, whereas if we lift the deed restriction, there's a strong likelihood that that money would stay within the municipality and return in some form as a suitable recreational purpose. So looking at it from a, you know, fiscally conservative standpoint, uh, I, I think that using the city owned land that we already own is the best use of our resources.
Other comment, council dwyer?
I, I believe that the, um, and perhaps, uh, city manager or someone can correct me, I believe the point that coun- council penelakis raised, I think that was one of the designs that was rejected and not moved forward with.
Well, if I might, council.
Please.
That has yet to be determined, there are, there are designs out there, the one of the preferences is, as council penelakis described, it was a preference of the state to say that the land that across the street would have to be, would, excuse me, would have to be made available, uh, priority wise for the middle school. And in order to do that, uh, it would be done in, uh, we'd have to figure out a way so that, uh, as was indicated, that the, there would be appropriate fields. Now, the other thing that can happen, and this is another, this is not, this is another option that can be looked at, that middle, that things at the location across the street could stay as regular grass fields, uh, and that turf, turfing take place at the high school with the be dedic, with those fields being dedicated for the middle school students. So, those are the two options. One of those options, the, I believe the, uh, recreation director prefers the option where the, uh, fields are left, um, as grass across the street so that they could be used as, um, probably I would suspect for gym classes or something. And then the sports teams would then, from the middle school, go to the high school on turf fields, uh, artificial turf fields. That's just, just to clarify, does that explain?
That helps.
I think that's kind of a little bit of what both of you are thinking and that's what is actually happening. It hasn't been decided.
Council kennedy?
Um, I, I've been listening to everyone, cause I'm really undecided on this whole thing. Because my issue is the fact that we sat here a couple weeks ago and did not agree with the amount of money being spent. And we all thought, I mean, right from the state, we heard it in the papers, we saw the papers, that we are looking for the grandiose middle school, the state of the art middle school, and in these times, we cannot have that. We saw a design, uh, as council penelakis said, we saw a design that was right for the middle school, within the middle school structure itself, and we were told it would work. Um, we saw many designs. I guess my concern is, is that we really don't have a design that we feel we can fiscally, responsibly afford as a community. So I'm not gonna vote for this until we get a designer, we get a figure that we can look at and say, as a community, we can afford that.
Thank you, further discussion, council dwyer?
But, but to be fair to the school board, um, they were, we're not at that point yet. I mean, I fully agree with what you, the essence of what you said, and to be fair to the school board, uh, I believe the guidance that was given to them and if they were operating under to bring something to us that night was that, um, they needed to bring to us a preferred site with the idea that we would begin moving forward on taking whatever action was necessary there while they did what you're talking about, while they, while they rescaled the school to come back to us with the cost figures. So, it would, it would seem to me that it would be totally unfair to them to hold them up on that because we basically set them up for that and, so I don't wanna pull the rug out from under them by now demanding that before we take the next step. I mean, I, I hear your dilemma, but I feel it would be really disingenuous of the council to have set them up and then to, to say no.
Council clayber?
I was just gonna reiterate what Chris just said, I do recall that the school board asked for guidance and said, okay, where do we go now? And what we said to them was, you need to tell us which way, which option you want us to then further explore with you. So I think with all due respect, the school board, that was the conversation and the understanding that, um, was made at the end of that work session. So it was proper for them to go back and discuss the various options, they came up with this option, now we have to take it from there.
I'm gonna pass the gavel to the assistant mayor. Mayor freiny? And ask him not to gavel me down in the immediate near future. Um, and, and I should say, maybe from my perspective, um, we need to look at what the motion is in front of us and where it fits in the process. It is to have the city attorney give us a report back on whether this can be done and how it would be done and what the cost would be. This is not a discussion about the cost of the middle school. I believe the middle school, as proposed, as do many councils, believe it was too large and should be scaled down. And I believe in good faith that it would be grandstanding to say that somehow they're not cognizant of that and that we're not gonna hear back from them in a productive way, I truly believe that we will. Voting for this report back is not voting for eminent domain, it allows us to move the process forward. We can have that vote later, once we understand what is in front of us. No doubt, after tonight's discussion, the school board's efforts will be underscored as I believe they are already in place to consider cost, to consider size, and to consider, uh, what the community can truly afford. But these two things aren't mutually exclusive. You can't say, I don't, I don't believe you can say, I don't wanna vote for a new middle school at the size they're offering, therefore I'm not gonna vote for this, the two aren't linked. And I think that you can easily vote to have this report back, understand what the process is, still potentially vote to go the other way, and certainly still vote to control cost. I don't think it's putting the cart before the horse, I think it's the only real easy way to move the process forward and that's why I intend to support it. Uh, assistant mayor?
Yeah, I, I can, I can vote for a report back, I just had to say upfront, before it's too late in the process, that I'm categorically opposed to using eminent domain. Now, if I hear different facts and figures, there's been a lot of information thrown around and maybe this, maybe, I, maybe there's some misunderstanding on my part and I'm willing to have an open mind, but I am not gonna take a vote tonight. Now, obviously, we're not gonna vote on that tonight because the motion is to just report back, I can support that, but just so it be known to my fellow councils and the school board and horde of us listening, um, I'm just naturally opposed to eminent domain unless, unless it's absolutely necessary.
Noted, further discussion, council penelakis?
Yes, are, are you saying that the city attorney is not going to pursue the fact that this is eminent domain and not set the process with this, with this?
This is a report back, this is not a vote to authorize him to begin the eminent domain process. Council smith?
Well, I'm gonna stick with my original intention and not support this because I would rather send the school board the message right now that, uh, that's, that's not where I'm, I'm thinking, uh, for eminent domain to, to even begin that process. So I'm gonna stick with my original, uh, intention because maybe then the school board can go back and we're not wasting their time while we're waiting for a report back that they can get back to work and start working on a different option.
Further discussion? Council clayber?
I, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna support it unless we, unless we have some kind of conversation with descendants of the Pierce family. I think that they made a donation to this, well, we purchased the land from the Pierce family, but the deed restriction says that it has to be for recreational use only. I think that that was done in 1913, almost 100 years ago. I think to honor the family's commitment to the city, to honor their gift, or whatever you wanna call it, cause we bought it, so it's not really a gift, but it had that restriction on it that it would be used forever for recreational purposes only. I think if we sat down with the family and talked to them, we may all feel better about the fact that we're taking this parcel of land and using it for something that isn't entirely recreation. I think, I think we should do that. I think we owe it to the family to do that. I think they're open to, and I mean, I've had just a brief initial conversation, and I think they're open to that. And I think that certainly would make me feel better about acquiring this land with discussion and some honest association with descendants of the family. So I want to strongly recommend that we do that, and I know then that I would, I think I would vote for it if I knew that the family was, was open to this.
If that is not offered as an amendment, I suppose that it could be conceived within the ambit of the charge to City Attorney Sullivan to be part of the report back and without a formal amendment and further motion practice. So I think at this point, everyone has had an opportunity to speak, unless someone feels, does anyone feel the need to add anything further? Counselor Spear?
You know I want to add one more thing. I want to mention, this issue came up in 1974 when we were considering expanding the middle school to that side. At that time, the city attorney did, not this present city attorney, but the previous one, did contact the heirs of the Pierce family and represented by their attorney, they said they had absolutely no problem with the middle school using that property. So I'll pass that on.
Are we ready to vote? Move the question.
Counselor Clayburg? I just, can, can, can we be, can, can I be assured and the rest of the council that, that our attorney will talk to the descendants of the Pierce family?
The idea was, as part of his report back, within that will be the, the timeline that would be to talk to the family, not to talk to them until, because you, that vote has not been taken to take the land. The only, the idea is, this report back, if it passes, would be the city attorney would lay out a timeline. As part of that timeline, we suspected put on, I suspect at some point, he'd have to talk to the.
The, the Pierce heirs, three of whom I think we're aware of, actually have standing to become involved in the eminent domain process. So it's a more than fair statement to say that they, we will hear from them.
Given that insurance, that assurance, the Assistant Mayor has called the question, unless someone seeks blazingly to stop me, I'm going to call it, ask for a roll call vote.
Maybe read the motion, please.
Yes, let's read the motion.
Yep. To refer the issue of developing a timeline for acquiring the property to the left of the Portsmouth Middle School to the city, city attorney Sullivan for report back. Assistant Mayor Blaylock.
Yes.
Counselor Novaleen Clayburg.
Yes.
Counselor Dwyer.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
No.
Counselor Kennedy.
No.
Counselor Spear.
Yes.
Counselor Pentelakis.
No.
Mayor Farini.
Yes.
Five to three.
Motion carries. On to the next one. This is item B, Roman numeral 11B, letter from Nick Diana regarding City Puppies, requesting permission to set a small pop-up tent for a photo shoot for a new book, City Puppies, Portsmouth Edition, in the Vaughan Mall. Your Honor, I, I will not continue reading. City Manager.
This was originally the, the individual wanted to place this in a parking spaces, wanted to be in Market Square. We asked them to reassess and do something in Vaughan Mall. Again, we're trying to get activities in Vaughan Mall, and the, he has indicated that he will be providing some proceeds to the Portsmouth Dog Park, 5% of his proceeds. So at this point, I think we've had an ample explanation from the city manager. We need a motion to accept this, and.
Move to the city manager with power. We have, we have a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unananced. Moving on to the city manager's portion of the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Let's see, we took here a couple of items. We took here item number one. Item number two, we have the proposed revised joint development agreement regarding the Weston project. And what I'd like to do is, I'd like to refer this to the city attorney to give an explanation as to where we're at on this matter.
Sure. I, I trust that the city council will not require me go, to go to the very beginning. But after a lengthy process, taking many years, involving maybe five trials in Superior Court, two or three appeals to the Supreme Court, and final action in the Superior Court, we have reached a point where all litigation, with the sole exception of a Supreme Court appeal, is really behind us now. And the, the final action by the Superior Court was an order from Judge McHugh, which said in substance that if the city of Portsmouth were to withdraw from its obligation to pay $15 million to buy the garage that would be constructed in conjunction with the hotel expansion and the 1,000-seat conference center, then all legal impediments to the progress, to the project going ahead would be virtually removed. So after discussions with Harbor Corp, hotel developer, we have determined to request the city council to resolve all the litigation that we're capable of resolving by means of accepting the judge's suggestion. Now, to accept the judge's suggestion, two things have to happen. Number one, the joint development agreement that was entered into two years ago, which would obligate the city to purchase the parking garage for $15 million after it was built, that joint development agreement needs to be amended to remove any reference to the city's obligation to purchase the parking garage. Now, I hesitate to point out, I don't hesitate to point out, that the city's motivation, the city's primary motivation in entering this agreement was not the parking garage anyway. It was to secure the economic benefits which would flow to the city from having a 1,000-seat conference center located in the downtown. The manager and I have had preliminary discussions with Harbor Corp, and if the council should pass a motion authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an amendment to the joint development agreement, as the judge has suggested, then that amendment would also include, however, that regardless of the city's withdrawing of its obligation to buy the parking garage for $15 million, Harbor Corp would still be obligated to build and operate the 1,000-seat conference center. So the primary economic benefit that was sought by the city council in the very beginning of this situation would still be secured. For that reason, we, at least I, very strongly recommend that the city council pass this step number one, which would be to authorize the city manager to renegotiate the joint development agreement and to remove the obligation of the city to buy the garage, but make sure that the agreement contains the agreement, the obligation of Harbor Corp to build the conference center.
So moved.
Right. Well, we have a second. We have a second. Do we have any further explanation?
The next one, after you.
Okay, that, well, the, the resolution under item three, just to, to give you a preview of coming attractions, is going to get to it further. So we do have a motion duly seconded discussion.
Counselor. Speak up quickly and just say, I think this is a nice, clean way of, of cleaning this up, and we can move forward because, again, the end result is to get that conference center, and get construction underway of the new Weston and conference center as fast as possible.
Counselor Kennedy?
Um, a lot of people have approached me and talked about growth in our city, and I know we've gone through all this. But I guess what I need to hear before we move forward is, what's this going to do for the average homeowner, besides bringing in a lot of people that are getting, taking spots in the restaurants, taking activities? Someone that lives here pays taxes. Is there a percentage of taxes that is going down because we build the Weston? Is there a percentage of freebie activities that are going to be given to taxpayers? Are they going to put into the sewage treatment plant? Are they going to put into the middle school? I guess, you know, I see these, this growth, and I'm seeing it all out there, and my question I have is, is was it giving to me? I mean, so far, every Saturday, with all this great growth and all this great vitality in our city, I still have a problem getting out of my driveway as a taxpayer. Am I going to get a benefit in taxes back because I have that problem? I'm not seeing it. And I guess that's what people are saying to me. What's our benefit? What's the kickback for me as a resident living in this great city to get from a 1,000-room place? I mean, you know, we were told that we're going to have parking over at the other place. Well, that's gone now. So not only that, we've lost more parking as a resident. So I guess those are questions that need to be put out there at this time.
City Manager, do you care to respond?
Well, I, I think that certainly that's some, some questions that have been asked over the whole period of this discussion, and the Economic Development Commission has gone through and answered many of those. The first one being with regards to the taxes. There will be, and, and more so to the degree that the taxes paid in will certainly help reduce some of the tax burden throughout the city. That's number one. But number two, the whole idea of the conference center and the, and I don't have all the reports that were done by our hospitality expert, but there is a circulation of money, there is a velocity of money that goes, as, as, as people come in and go to conferences, they'll come, they'll park their car, they'll spend their three days or whatever, there'll, there'll be time, they'll spend time at the conference center, but they'll also walk to the many shops and restaurants that we have in the city. For example, there was a small conference that I participated in, and we had 150 people, which is a very small conference. But there was one night that there was those people with their spouses at a restaurant downtown that probably made that, that week for that restaurant. And that's just one small conference. The idea is that to keep ourselves, it really is the, the fuel that will keep the engine of the downtown going. You know, we have a downtown that's very unique, and we'd like to keep it that way. But we need people that are going to continue to come to our shops, come to our restaurants, and patronize them. And, and those conferences that happen on a regular basis are what's going to keep the engine running in our downtown. That will be the fuel. It's, it's a perfect location for a conference center. You get off exit seven, you ride down, you go into the garage, and you park your car. I mean, many of us that go to conferences, once you're at the conference, you typically don't take your car out. And, and, and the fact is that we've, we've talked about this, there's been numerous studies done, we've talked about this for over 10 years. There also is, as a result, impact fees that will have to be paid for any sewer impacts or water impacts. We passed those in the previous ordinance. I could go on for a long time talking about the benefits. Certainly, some people may feel there, there aren't the benefits, but there were those people that didn't think we should have done anything in Market Square in 1978 either. So those are the things you have to remember. There, there are, the, this is something that hasn't been thought of on the fly, this is something that's been talked about for a number of years, and certainly for every great city, which we are, will, will, this will help us move another step closer to continuing our economic vitality.
Counselor Smith, then Counselor Kennedy.
Thank you. You're absolutely right, there is no kickback on this, and if someone is looking for a kickback in the community, they're not going to get it. With exception is that as the city continues to grow, you, adding projects like this will keep our tax burden down. But somebody who sees it as firsthand, at, at the incredible job that the facilities down there already do in bringing in conferences, the argument was made at, at other meetings that people come in, they park their car there, they eat in the restaurant, they stay, they do everything in the facility, and then pack up and leave, and that is furthest from the truth. I can attest to that day after day after day after day. They come into the shops. I have customers that come into my shop that came to a conference a couple of years ago, they just fell in love with the city, and they come back, and they make, stop in my shop, they may not buy anything, but they just say, hi, we're back. And they go down to the restaurants. And those restaurants are paying employees, and a lot of those restaurant owners live here, and that's keeping the money local, and that's what's driving this, this whole machine. You have so many of the different businesses that are downtown that are former employees and cooks of other restaurants that have gone to open up their own businesses, and they're building this. The unique thing about Portsmouth, and I preach this every day, is how we, as a community, take care of each other on a local basis. A majority of the people that live here that I, I talk with do not shop at Walmart. They do not shop at, even go to Starbucks. They'll go to Breaking New Grounds, they'll go to a local coffee shop, they, you know, we've lost Peavy's, we've, we just lost Eagle Photo because of the big box stores, because of that shopping local thing. And that's what brings people down here. And people that come into these conferences, they see this, and they, they love it. It is such a unique economic engine we have that, that takes care of our downtown, and I, for one, am so proud to be part of it, and now be able to add another conference center to really show off our city. And what is the benefit? It keeps our tax base down. What this facility is going to give us in, in not only just the economic dollars for the local restaurants and shops, it's also to the individual citizens of keeping the tax base down. Because as we've, we've already seen, we're looking at teacher contracts, that's going to be expensive. We have new schools that will have to be built, that's going to be expensive. We need new wastewater treatment, water treatment plant. All those things are expensive. And unless you have the continued growth, whether it be of this development, we don't have any more land to build homes. You have to do something. And this is a good way to have a win-win for the city. And I am, I'm for one, and am so upset that we had to go through all the selfishness of the lawsuits to get to this point. And I'm so happy that we can finally move on and get this going. I'm sorry we don't own the parking garage, but yet that parking garage will still have spaces and be open to the public for anybody who wants to use them. The faster I think we can vote on this and move on to the next issue, the better.
Counselor Kennedy, then Counselor Dwyer?
Um, I guess it goes to quality of life. And, and I understand what you do, Counselor Smith, I under, in my respect. I don't think all the business owners downtown, I remember when I was on the campaign trail, there was a couple of business owners, they were kind of thinking that it was going to be a burden to them because people wouldn't leave the facility, as you said. But it's the quality of life of residents living here. How many more people can we take in the city and still keep the quality of life that we enjoy in respect of a small city? The other thing I have is, is that when you say, City Manager Bohanko, that the taxes will be a rate down, I would love to see that rate. I know you can't, but I'd love to see a rate. Because, be honest with you, people aren't seeing their taxes going down. They're seeing buildings going up, they're seeing their spaces being closed, and I know they're commercial spaces, but they're still seeing, but people are not seeing anything for them as citizens, as community members, as long-term community members in this community. Now, if you're a business owner downtown, you probably are seeing some stuff from the building. But what does that do to the neighborhoods? What does that do to the people here? We are not seeing a return for not being able to enjoy our own city. And I think that that's something that we need to show people. We need, and if it's there, if it's information, if it's data there, then let's show it. If we're going to see our taxes go down, then let's see it. We haven't. I think that's my dilemma.
Counselor Dwyer?
I want to say two things. One is, just to remind us what we're voting on, which is the, we're essentially just taking away the obligation of the city to build the parking facility. I'm sorry that we have to do that, but that, because I think that the economic benefit of having parking facilities is as great as the economic benefit of lots of retail and other stuff. But that's, that's another discussion. So all we're voting on, we're not voting on whether a convention center is a good idea or not. That happened a long, long time ago. What we're voting on is making legal, making appropriate, taking away our obligation to build a parking facility. So that's one thing. And, you know, just like we weren't voting on a while ago the cost of the middle school, we're voting on what's before us. But the second thing is, anybody who has not yet learned the value But the second thing is, anybody who has not yet learned the value of being a center of commerce as we are, and the economic vitality of being a center of commerce, when you look at any other municipality in this city, in this state, or any other municipality in New England right now, and see the economic difficulties they're having, and see what we did this year with our budget and how that's going to hold steady, that's the benefit that people are having. They are not getting $9 increases on their tax rate like some of our other cities in New Hampshire. And I understand that economics does require the understanding of multiple variables moving at the same time. But at least this council needs to understand the value of what makes our city a strong city and what the economic base is here. Because it's not just residents who live here. Businesses live here too, all kinds of businesses. And the, you know, we are obligated by our state law to be taxing people equally. It's not like residents are getting taxed and businesses are getting a free ride. And so, the economic base of our city, the mix that we have of our city, has kept us in a completely different place than other cities. I don't think we've touted that enough. Otherwise, you wouldn't be able to be, bring such a point out tonight because you, it would be self-evident that we're in a completely different position because of that kind of economic thinking than, than our colleague cities. I'm pleased about that. I think our city manager and our city staff should be thrilled about it. But lest we lose that advantage because of misunderstanding what goes into the economic mix, we ought to talk about it a lot. Because it would be a real shame. I mean, that's the advantage, and it would be a real shame to lose that with misunderstanding.
Further discussion.
Fourth best city to live.
Counsel Penelakis.
Yes, I would like to move this along as much as we can. And I'm just sorry for the revenue that we've lost in the past years because of selfish people. And I think we need to get on to it as soon as possible.
Additional discussion.
Move the question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I want, I want, I want to abstain.
Okay, a vote no is to have them still, have us still pay for the parking garage. Yes? Yes, okay.
Did you vote opposed?
No, I want to abstain.
You're abstaining. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're, thank you, Your Honor. Item three is, the resolution is the next procedural step that we need to take, rescission of the $15 million borrowing authorization for the Weston project. And we've attached a copy of the proposed resolution entitled rescinding certain borrowing authority. This is straightforward rescission of borrowing authority created by the city council on December 19, 2005, for the purpose of purchasing the parking garage. This resolution may be adopted by a single vote of the council without a public hearing. And basically what it does is it takes away the legal obligation that we have for borrowing. It also frees up our financial statements so that we are, so we don't have that obligation anymore.
Thank you, City Manager. We need a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve a resolution rescinding the certain borrowing authority as regard to the Resolution 13-2005 by the city council on December 19, 2005.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Respectfully, we may have had the discussion. A vote for is to rescind, a vote against is to not, a vote to abstain is you don't like the choices. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have roll call, all in favor. I guess a roll call vote. I knew that.
Assistant Mayor Blaylock?
Yes.
Counsel Noveline Kleberg?
Yes.
Counsel Dwyer?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Abstain.
Counsel Speer?
Yes.
Counsel Penelakis?
Yes.
Mefrini?
Yes.
It passes with one abstention.
Yes. Now, we move on to item four, which is a request from the town of Newcastle utilizing shared government circumstance for a fuel depot. So, thank you, Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Steve Parkinson, Public Works Director, has reviewed a request from the town of Newcastle to purchase fuel from the city of Portsmouth's Public Works fueling facility. We have an attached letter from the, from Mr. Gamester from Newcastle. At present time, the Public Works Department supplies fuel, both gasoline and biodiesel to all city agencies, police, fire, school, Portsmouth Housing Authority. Approximately...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
All right. Approximately 78,000 gallons of biodiesel and 99,000 gallons of gasoline are distributed on an annual basis. Each agency is billed on a monthly basis for usage based upon the computer system that dispenses the fuel to their respective vehicles. Each vehicle is issued a unique key which activates the pump for type of fuel required and documents the total gallons dispensed to the vehicle. What we would do is we would, we would bill the, the town of Newcastle. It would have minimal impact and we would add a 10 cents a gallon premium to, to the cost to cover our, our administrative costs. This is a 24-hour-a-day fueling facility and there's very minimal impact from Newcastle. Steve Parkinson is here to answer any questions you might have, but it's pretty much an intergovernmental cooperation and it would be just a memorandum of understanding.
We, do we have a motion and then we can have Mr. Parkinson, if needed, and discussion?
So moved.
We have a motion, we'll take, he's the second. Does anyone feel the need? Before we get to discussion, would anyone like to hear from Mr. Parkinson? None would like to do so, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Item five.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to have Dave Holden come down and talk about the next two items, the report back regarding Portsmouth City Soccer Club to hang banners at Larry Field. And if you recall, we referred this to the planning board for report back. And David, I'd like you to speak to that one. And then immediately thereafter, we have a report back regarding New Adventure Entertainment, also referred to the planning board. So, David, why don't you start with the city soccer club?
Mr. Holden.
Honorable Mayor, the planning board considered the request of the Portsmouth City Soccer Club at its last meeting. This report has been presented to you and it mirrors the one that was done a few years back for the Babe Ruth League. And that is a suggestion that you allow us to go forward as a pilot program and that you would also ensure that there be no tagging activities, the number of signs would be limited, their placement would be the same as for the Babe Ruth League. The planning board thought that this was a good recommendation to make in as much as it mirrored the prior requests as well.
And just to add that for the public, that there is no more than five sign blanks shall be erected on the outfield fence, each with dimensions of three by five feet. And with the height and location of each to be determined by the city, that the club shall place no signs earlier than August 15th and these signs shall be removed no later than November 15th. All signs facing shall be in or towards the playing field. All signed backing shall be white in color, all lettering logos shall be of dark green color, and any lettering shall share the same style and font.
We need a motion before we have discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The next item, Your Honor, is a report back regarding New Adventure Entertainment LLC, request for approval of lighting and awnings at 172 Hanover Street. And I'll let David talk to this, to this issue.
Mr. Holden.
At the same meeting, the planning board considered this request and recommends that you grant licenses necessary to allow the awnings and the light fixtures. At the time of the discussion, a discussion in regards to tree plantings was removed, so the only issue before you are the seven awnings and five lamp fixtures. The recommendation is that a license should be granted for these.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, David. The next item is a request to exempt city-owned land from the Shoreland Protection Act. I'd like to have a deputy city manager come down and speak to this issue. And as she does come down, it pretty much revolves around the new Shoreland Protection Act and, and our ability to function as a city to fix our streets and our sidewalks. But I'll let her explain the whole thing.
Good evening, Cindy Hayden, Deputy City Manager. The Shoreland Protection Act has been on the books for a while. It was recently amended and those amendments took effect July 1st. In Portsmouth, it applies primarily to our tidal waters, Piscataqua, the Mill Pond, Saginaw Creek, and Little Harbor. And in a nutshell, what it requires is that any activity within 250 feet of mean high water, you have to go to DES and get a state shoreline protection permit. And the key parts of the provision are, there's a 50-foot setback for any primary use building. Different, different regs apply to accessory structures. And the most meaningful one for us is that impervious, the amount of impervious surfaces, pavement, roofs, et cetera, are limited to 20% within that 250-foot setback. So, for us, where it really becomes kind of challenging is if we're doing something as simple as repaving a road or replacing a sewer line, we would have to go to the state and get a shoreline protection permit. So, under this State Shoreland Act, municipalities are allowed to go to DES and say, "Would you please exempt certain properties?" So, the map, the large-scale map that you have in your packets shows all of the properties we would ask the state to exempt. Essentially, they're all city-owned properties that are within that 250-foot area, as well as all rights of way, which, and, and all of our pump stations, et cetera. So, there's a lot of little spaces on the map, those, those are our pump stations. So, if the council approved going forward with this, we would request an exemption of the DES and then they would say either yes or no or...
And we have provide, provided a letter from the mayor, that's a draft that would go to DES for this proposed exemption.
Questions for the deputy city manager. Assistant Mayor.
Would this enable this future city councils or city officials to build in the shoreline protection areas that are exempted without any review? For example, a new structure or pave a new road, I mean, do work that, and, and coaches more on the shoreline with that, that's, and other than, you're mentioning more or less maintenance work, avoiding having to get permits for maintenance work. Would this also exempt having to get permits for putting up a building?
Very good question. Relative to buildings, this, this activity of building near the waterfront is already regulated under state wetlands. So, they've, there's going to be an interesting dynamic that occurs when somebody's building near the shoreline now as to whether they, if they're exempt under shoreline protection, do they still need a wetlands permit? My guess is they do, and so they would still be, whether it's us building it or someone else, you still won't be able to have a primary structure within 50 feet of the water. So, in answer to your question, no, future city councils would not be able to build primary structures within 50 feet of the water unless DES waived that requirement.
Counsel Smith, then Counsel Dwyer.
What about if, how would this affect, say, the, the Riverwalk?
If we got the exemption, then we wouldn't have to go get a shoreline permit if we were adding impervious surface. Because it's, it's all about, they're trying to limit the amount of impervious surface within that 250 feet from mean high water. So, if we were exempted, we wouldn't have to go get a shoreline permit, we would still have to go get a wetlands permit.
Thank you. Counsel Dwyer.
Two questions. We're asking for an exemption, not only for the impervious surface aspect of it, but for other aspects?
From the entire act.
Yeah, that's what, I just wanted to make sure. So, particularly the clearing and the, the percentages of, you know, the duff and all that that has to be left. So, we're really asking for an exemption for the entire act. For, I mean, this is a...
For those particular parcels shown on the map.
For these particular parcels, yeah.
Right. And, you know, in areas around Winnipeg, the, the act is very complex and it was really written with Winnipeg and trees and forest coverage in mind. For us, given the areas that are within this jurisdiction, it's mostly urbanized and the urbanized areas, the state feels much better about exempting those.
Right. And then the, the second question, in no way does this change what our municipal practice of taking anything through the, an appropriate board. This is really just exempting from the state shoreline, from the new, from this new shoreline protection act.
Right, it's exempting us from having to go to the state to get a Shoreline Protection Act permit. Correct.
Further questions? Seeing none, we need a motion.
So moved. And second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you, Your Honor. We did already do item number eight, item number nine, proposed date regarding Boards and Commissions' Annual Recognition Night as a result of the June 16 city council meeting. The city clerk has reviewed the city council meeting scheduled for 2008 and is proposing December 8, 2008, which is the second Monday for the Boards and Commissions' Annual Recognition Night. If you recall, the council wanted to do this on a Monday.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
I have nothing else, Your Honor. I would feel any questions the council might have. Does it matter?
Any miscellaneous questions for the city manager? Hearing none, we'll head to the portion of the agenda under my name. First, we have an appointment to be voted, and that would be Christine Woodman-Caza to the Safe Loops to School Committee. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We now have a, we have three, rather, four resignations before us. And they are Mike Murray, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read them all at the same time, perhaps we could vote them in a, in a block. Mike Murray from the Economic Development Commission, Robin McIntosh from the Economic Development Commission, Thomas Boko from the Pierce Island Committee, and Charles Oxford from the Portsmouth Housing Authority. If there's no objection, can we have a motion to accept with regret?
Accept with regret, and can we please have letters to go out to each of them?
Letters will go out, we have a second, and we will make sure that letters indeed go out of appreciation and we will also notify them of the December 8 night as well. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We now have some appointments for consideration. Steve Miller for reappointment to the Conservation Commission, Barbara Miller for reappointment to the Conservation Commission, Allison Tanner for reappointment to the Conservation Commission, Brian Waslaw for reappointment to the Conservation Commission, Nancy Beach for reappointment to the Cable Commission, and Richard Katz for reappointment to the Historic District Commission. If people wish to speak with me before the next meeting, please do not hesitate to do so. And that ends my portion of the agenda for this evening. Next, we move to item C, Counsel Penelakis, and the Resolution on the Granite State Fair Tax Coalition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I never intended to ask this council to take a vote on this. I just thought it should be brought forth because it was brought up by other people at the legislature and 89 towns and cities have already voted on this. And it is just to enlighten the people on what, that 60% of the state is, is property taxes and the rest are fees and fines. And we just need to, perhaps in the future, talk about some other tax structure. But I never intended, unless we had a big turnout here of people, to ever ask you to vote on this.
That's okay. So, under the circumstances, you are not opposing it as a resolution. It is then not before us. We've had a public hearing, but I'll just make sure with the city attorney, I presume if she does not wish to go forward with the motion and no one else wishes to, we do not need to vote on it? Then there is no motion. Correct. Okay, Counsel Penelakis, thank you for that informational point. That brings us down to miscellaneous and unfinished business. Does anyone care to have a floor? Counsel Smith?
One very quick point, it was brought to my attention recently that Foster's Daily Democrat is going to be losing one of their very outstanding writers. And I just wanted to thank her for her time and her wonderful writing, and she will be missed.
Okay, thank you. Would that be Gretchen?
He's flashing up there.
Gretel. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Do we have a second? Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.